Good evening, everybody, to the special meeting of Lowell School Committee. I'd like to have everybody stand to salute the flag. Fudge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaris?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Darity?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. All right, the first out of business tonight is to cancel the November 21st meeting of Lowell School Committee. I need a motion to cancel the November 21st meeting by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, next we have a motion to accept the communication of Dr. Solak Kafawi relative as waiver of a hearing before the school committee. I need a motion to accept the letter by Ms. Darity, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Abstain.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
I abstain.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
I abstain.
Four yeas, three abstain, passes.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion to vote to terminate the employment of Dr. Solak Kafawi pursuant to paragraph five of his contract of employment and the provisions of his August 24th, 2018 notice of contemplated termination. I need a motion by Ms. Darity, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? We have a registered speaker, I believe, on this matter. Mr. Georges.
Yeah, Paul Georges, United Teachers of Lowell. I'm sure you know who I am. I don't believe I'm going to convince anybody, change their mind on this. I think it's pretty predestined, the votes, the no votes will, or the yes votes will take place, and the superintendent will be fired this evening. Embarrassed to say that would happen. Over the last weeks, since the 18th, since the 18th of July, there's been one meeting after another after another orchestrated, I would say like a production of Hamilton, creating high drama, new finding, saying the hole was deeper, the budget was more of a calamity. And I wonder about that in a lot of ways because as a result of that, we were contacted by administration about looking at possible concessions on our part to the contract provisions that we've agreed to a couple of years ago. It seems to me, so with due diligence, I insisted that we send whatever documentation we needed to AFTN Washington to justify. I guess it's the old Reagan principle, trust but verify before you buy it. Unfortunately, there's been a continued act of diminishing this superintendent. And I want to make a suggestion to you. Being a good superintendent just doesn't mean you're a financial wizard. It also means you inspire people, you treat people fairly, you treat them with respect and dignity, you elevate them to some degree. This superintendent has those qualities. But I've also seen him maneuver through some very difficult financial times over the last two years. I don't want to have any of this be interpreted as in any way reflecting negatively on the current leadership in Lowell Public School System. That's a different issue. But the question is whether or not this was appropriate. Was it necessary? And I don't believe it was. I understand there were some difficult times, difficult times financially, but the superintendent has shown great creativity. In fact, just a few days ago, last Wednesday at the school committee meeting, there was a motion, I believe, that came forward to be some action that could save approximately $1.4 million of what had been purported as a $2.4 million shortfall. $1.4 million would be filled by, eliminated by taking certain steps that were proposed by the superintendent of schools in his budget last June. That means you could have gotten there. The sick leave buyback proposal was adopted by the school committee by a six to one vote. It allowed you to put sick leave buyback into the next year and eliminate it from the budget this year as a problem. You pay it back someday, but you don't have to do it soon. When you find yourself in a fiscal crisis, you deal with it in the best way that you possibly can. But what's embarrassing to me is there seems to have been this coordinated effort to diminish this superintendent at a time when a gag order had been issued by the city solicitor, from my understanding, not allowing central administrators to even speak to this superintendent to find, to get valuable information that could have been, would have been extremely valuable in trying to bridge the gap between, in a budget shortfall. That wasn't necessary. I understood that there were some mistakes made. I've been at every budget hearing, and now I find out, it appears, now we're looking at perhaps one, $1 million, a little over $1 million shortfall, and $500,000 of it can be solved by an agreement that we made that allowed you to transfer or defer $500,000 of sick leave buyback into the next fiscal year, that doesn't impact any retiring teacher whatsoever. Why not solve it? Was this constant drone of $2.4 million, $2.4 million, $2.4 million legitimate? Or was it an attempt to vilify and undermine support for the superintendent of schools? The action taken on the 18th, the three motions that were placed on the floor, three members of this school committee really had nothing to do with it. How did that happen? How was it that three were blindsided at that meeting? They knew what the motion was, they didn't know where it was generated. That's problematic. Is this really about finance, or is this about control?
Mr. Georges, just for the record, you've got three minutes, you've gone to five minutes, but I'm allowing you, because of your position, to speak.
I appreciate that. But the question is, it seemed to me on the 18th, when the vote was taken, and the fact that the superintendent did not receive a notice until the 24th of August about the so-called cause for action, meant that the actions taken on the 18th were not because you had cause on the 18th, but because you wanted to find cause. And on the 20th, because if that were the case, you would have sent him a letter the next day. These are all things that have to be looked at, and what is, what the intention of this? The intention was to eliminate the superintendent because of financial issues? Or was that the excuse? Because people who have had reign in this school committee over previous superintendents that didn't stand up to them, wanted him out of the picture. I hope as a result of this, there's a lot of people out there watching at home, or some people watching at home, that may consider running for school committee next time around. I hope that they want to do it for the right reasons, and that is, the betterment of the school system, the children that the school system serves, rather than their own particular interests. I'm not sure this action is because of the, is for the betterment of the school system, or for the betterment of the fiefdoms, if you want to put it, that people have created over years to give them unusual discretion to impact how a school system is run at the expense of the school system and the students within it. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much. I think you, and I think you're making a major mistake if you vote to terminate the superintendent tonight.
But just, just for the record, we always invite people to run for this office, or any office, city council or school committee. I'd venture to say, even though we have difference of opinion between all of us here, we all have a difference of opinion, I respect this board, and this board, these people that ran for office, ran to do the right thing. We have a difference of opinion, but that's okay. But the thing is, I think, when, when it all comes out, when everything comes out, because we tried to follow protocol, not to put anybody into an embarrassing situation, not to create, as you stated, some type of dynamics that, that is, we'll say, not in the best direction. But what we're trying to do as a school committee is to ensure that the children of this school system receive the best possible education possible, and that the taxpayers are protected. That's my statement.
I wish I could trust that, Mr. Samaris.
Thank you. Ms. Darity?
I think, Your Honor, I don't plan to get into a back and forth with our previous speaker, but I feel compelled strongly to just point out a couple of things. The deficit that we're dealing with is far beyond $2 million. We're looking at over $2 million we have to pay back to Desi, and those of us who've read our packet at our last meeting saw the letter from Desi kindly giving us four years to pay that back, but indicating that that was because that was money misspent, that was clearly identified. The $1.4 million, I believe it was a little under that, that was brought forward to us last week as a way to cut down on the $2 million we have to come up with right now, is some really deep hits that is going to impact every single member of our staff, including the teachers, such as a director of HR not having a director of HR, principals carrying on more of that load, our CFO carrying on more of that load. That is going to impact the entire district. Not having a coordinator for our middle school alternative program. There are many other hits, social worker positions that not being replaced. Those don't come easily to go without that staff. And then if I could just point out, there's another couple of million out there, and that was the $2 million in additional revenue that we got from the state, money this board, I know every member of this board was hoping to use to reinstate our media aides, to reinstate positions like social workers that we desperately need, high school, there was a high school guidance council position on that cutting board. I'm just talking off the top of my head, but we have more than $5 million in cuts. And if the previous speaker considers that a minor infraction, that's up to him, and I would thank his members to think about as we move forward as a district and try to recover from what I think has been some very damaging leadership. I speak for myself here, this was not a move taken lightly, it has been very disruptive for all of us, I recognize that, but we need to deal with the budget errors and other issues that were at stake and move forward, and that is my intention. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Mr. Hoey?
Thank you, Mayor. Young lady for the Lowell Sun, I have a copy of this, when I'm done, I'll give it to you so you can get all my words right. I didn't want to just speak without paper tonight, so I'll give you this when I'm done. I cannot understand why we won't agree to settle this issue with the firing of the superintendent before it becomes a lawsuit against the city of Lowell. I am sure that after tonight, we will no longer, it will no longer be just our issue to solve, it will also be the city's issue to solve. I have no doubt the city manager will now have to get involved in order to protect the city's best interest. It seems that the city manager could not get involved in this dispute with the superintendent because she had to recuse herself because of the busing issue yet to be settled, an issue we are still waiting to hear about from the inspector general's office. This was actually the straw that broke the camel's back when Dr. Kafawi blew the whistle to the inspector general's office on the busing issue. If you look back at almost every meeting the last two years and approximately 10 months, you will see several of what I call motions of mass destruction thrown at Dr. Kafawi by a couple of my colleagues. The last four months after he left, you hardly seen any. These colleagues never wanted Dr. Kafawi, and they worked very hard to get rid of him. This is my opinion and the results of not picking Jay Lang. They did not like Dr. Kafawi because he did not allow them to run the HR and micromanage it like the old times. They tried to, they tried very hard to block him to hire Mrs. Bestie as the head of the high school. They wanted their chosen candidate, Amy McLeod. They tried to block him...
Excuse me. Excuse me. I don't want names, no, let's...
I'll try not to do any more names, but will you let me finish my speech, Mayor?
No, excuse me.
Yeah.
I don't want the use of names because that could create lawsuits for us and all kinds of problems.
Okay, I will try to, I'll try not to use a name again, okay? Thank you very much, Mayor, but please let me finish.
I will, provided you...
Okay. All right. They tried to block him when he hired the AD. Make no mistake, this is all about who controls the AD. One of our authors of a motion to July 18th admitted publicly on WCAP that the city solicitor helped advise and design the motions. I believe that this is unethical for the city solicitor to conspire with a couple of members to fire the superintendent. The city solicitor should not be working with a couple of members of the school committee and keep the others in the dock. I believe there is a law that requires the vote of the whole school committee for that. The city solicitor was happy to help them. She was another one against the superintendent, in my opinion, when the superintendent fixed the racial issue at the high school, the city solicitor never got over that. She wanted to fix it herself, her own way. Instead, the superintendent chose to trans, chose to be transparent and appointed a community task force to investigate. This was a huge issue at the time, if you remember Boston Latin and everything else. The school, the superintendent should have received praise, instead, he became the enemy. She, she has worked very hard with my two colleagues to get rid of him. I also believe the city's... I'm almost done, Mayor.
You know, you've really gone beyond the pale.
Okay, that's fine. I think a few years have gone beyond too. Can I finish? I'm almost done, Mayor.
But the thing is...
You don't like it. That's fine.
No, it's, it's, there's a proper way of doing things.
Well, there is, and this is my proper way. I believe, I'm almost done, Mayor, I've got very little bit left, and I'll try to be as calm and as collective as I can be. I also believe the city solicitor and the mayor have kept information from me and some of my colleagues. They also had meetings without giving myself or some of my colleagues any notice, just like the meeting that they had in the mayor's reception room right after November 7th executive session. I also believe the executive session minutes have been tainted, and I will not approve them or vote for them tonight. Lastly, and I'm almost done, I am always concerned when any member of the Lowell Public School System doesn't receive his or her due process when it comes to employment issues like this, and in my opinion, Dr. Solak Kafawi did not get his due process. Dr. Kafawi received great evaluations in his first two years, and when it was time to start his third one, he was robbed of his right to an evaluation process that we give all our educators, not to mention that he also did not get his due process to a fair and impartial hearing. Thank you very much for putting up with me, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All right.
Mayor?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Lay?
I prepared something to say also. Mayor, if I may, I may speak in Kamai in about three seconds. Thank you. In April 2018, superintendent was given a task to balance a budget that had about $2.5 million short. Any cuts would have been painful, so it was our school committee people that directed him to find a way to avoid cuts. Since the notion of terminating Superintendent Kafawi in July and place him on administrative leave, our schools have not been doing well. Staffs are scared of losing their jobs. School employees are no longer giving me their opinions. People are scared. I cannot recall if I ever seen American workers so scared of their boss as I have seen in our school system today. When we voted to place Dr. Kafawi on administrative leave, we did not vote to make our school better, nor we did the right thing. We were not being fair either. Dr. Kafawi did not get a fair due process, and the resident of Lowell did not get a fair due process. I have great respect for my colleagues, they have been around city politics for a long time. They are smart people, and they know a lot, and they know what they're doing. To see the method used to terminate Dr. Kafawi, and to see them trying so hard to come up with justification to support the action they took, has made each school committee budget meeting less and less meaningful. People of Lowell know that too. My read into this madness toward Dr. Kafawi is hatred. Mayor, what I said, what I meant to say was, the method being used to terminate superintendent in the meth, is method I used to see done in Cambodia as a child, and not a fair process that I expect to see in today's United States. Many people are concerned about school committee violating open meeting law, and last week's cancellation and reinstatement of the school committee's meeting was the most recent eye-opening puzzle. The fact that we were able to unanimously go ahead with a meeting, and done so already for one week, may have indicated the way we have been interpreting the laws. Despite the public's criticism, evidently, we, we know better than the public. Three school committee and mayor had decided to terminate Dr. Kafawi in July before any prior discussion with the whole school committee, and before presenting the cause, the causes for termination to the whole school committee. The explanation of the so-called deficit by our new CFO came after the termination process. This so-called budget deficit has become the focal reason for the reason for termination. My colleagues are working hard to use, to use it to justify their action for termination. To my understanding, Dr. Kafawi was considered for termination for personal reasons, or for reasons other than performance. Because of those reasons, I am against terminating Dr. Kafawi. Worst-case scenario, Suterman is a cheaper alternative for both parties. I favor resolving this gridlock by Suterman. If we allow it to go to litigation, it gives great benefit to lawyers, not the resident of Lowell. Mayor, that's all I prepared to say tonight, and thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I obviously agree with my other two colleagues just spoke, as well as Mr. Georges. I do, however, have an opinion that with this issue that seems to be presented to us, that a professional way to have dealt with it would have been for us to bring him in, to have a discussion about our concerns that were never voiced prior to the 18th of July, that we would have talked this, this list over with him and say, as his bosses, that you have six months or the rest of this school year to straighten this out. That was not done, and I think that is going to come back and cost the city an awful lot. That would have been the professional way to do it, and I don't think we went about this professionally, and I also will be voting against termination. Thank you.
Mr. Nutter?
Thank you, Mayor. We have presented a lot of financial issues. Mr. Georges mentioned the sick leave buyback. I was the one, when he said it was six to one, against. It is not proper budget to carry a structural deficit. That's $500,000. I would not want to still carry that. We need to find a way to put that in the budget and take care of it. We have another $500,000 structural deficit because of the mismanagement of the food service account for the next four years. The night that we voted to place a superintendent on leave, I stated many reasons. Not informing the last school committee that by law, they were required to vote on the budget, that by law, they could not submit a budget higher than what the city council had voted for. They never were given those facts. They never were told, and this school committee was not told, that the previous administration submitted a budget on their own. When I was elected in November, Dominic Lay and I... When I was elected in November, Dominic Lay and I met with the superintendent and the administrative staff. We were given large books with basic things that we needed to know, and unfortunately, the budget that we were given then was the same inaccurate information that had been given to the previous school committee. We had not been given the correct information, and we had never been informed. When we sat through a two-hour budget presentation, and the idea that cuts were not made is laughable, because it is embarrassing to me that a city this size has no libraries open in their elementary and middle schools, but we do not because of budget cuts. We eliminated positions, but we found other items that were not paid, we found buses that were needed. At the budget hearing, the question was asked if we were splitting the time at the STEM Academy. Yes, it's all set. Unfortunately, no buses were ordered for that. We have shown, in my opinion, in my opinion, when I ran for this office, it was all about looking at the finances, and it still is, and I think unfortunately, this is the best for the city of Lowell.
Any? Ms. Lay?
Because back then, Mr. Nada, just for the record, for the book that we received, I believe, was it you, Ms. Durkin, that had those finance book, and we were shortly after given the updated sheet to correct? Just for the record, I do not believe, back then, either Ms. Durkin or Dr. Kafawi did that on purpose to give us the wrong finance book. It was-
The budget information-
A few sheets that were needed, that needed update, I believe, that was the case.
Just for the record, the superintendent is responsible for whatever material you've got as a school committee, it's the superintendent's responsibility, not-
He was not here, Mayor, so that's why, I just want to mention-
For the record, for the record, he is the man in charge. Whatever is given out, is given with his approval. That's it. Mr. Nada?
It was Mr., it was the former CFO who gave us financial information. The book we received from Ms. Durkin had to do with student support services, not with financial information. She didn't handle the finances.
And wouldn't be responsible for it? Rest in peace. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, just as we, as we move into taking this actual vote, and I certainly have listened to both, both arguments, and have, I think, over the course of several years now. For myself, as an individual member of this, this committee, having taken that action in July, it was done, again, very soberly, and after having considered a lot of different options, because I recognize that there were severe deficiencies in our district that were going to have an impact on the way our students are taught and learn in our community. I'm not going to go through the listing, but I know, I said it that night, and I will say it again now, that because of bad decisions, you know, that's why we find ourselves in this position we are today, having to still be considering cuts, even, you know, we're in November now, cuts that we make now have almost twice the impact moving forward. You know, the decisions we made last week only, you know, got us to the one point four, we're still looking at a million dollar problem. And just a little bit of context, you know, even, we were looking at a two point five million dollar problem back in April and May. Since that time, we've had more than four million dollars that have come back in, and yet we're still behind the eight ball, now over a million dollars. So, I mean, there was a lot that, both from the state, that came to mitigate our situation, as I think Ms. Dougherty had mentioned, that should have been able to solve these problems. But because the hole was so deep, it just wasn't enough for us to be able to dig out. And I think over the course of time, I think that performance standards that have always been upheld in this, in this district, in terms of the way we work with our staff, the way we work with our families and students, simply did not rise to an appropriate level of professionalism in these last years. I think there are some who enjoyed, you know, excellent experiences, but I think that there were many who did not. And I think that, you know, as we move forward, I'm hoping that we can move forward in a positive way, but I do think at the very least, we need to begin looking at how we move forward. This has taken up a great deal of time and effort and energy, and I think it's to the district and overall, all the stakeholders benefit, that we can end this process tonight, and at least begin moving forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, I appreciate your letting me speak one more time, and I'll be very quick. I just wanted to correct some inaccurate statements that were made by my colleagues on either side of me. Regarding the performance concerns, I, some people might have felt that was a surprise, what came out in July, but I was very clear, and I would suggest you go back and perhaps watch the evaluation from December two thousand seventeen, when we evaluated the superintendent on the previous year. At that time, I reiterated concerns about the budget that I had had the year before. I also, at that time, talked about my HR concerns, which were never about personally hiring any one particular person, but following our guidelines and our policies, in terms of screening committees, and the use of screening committees, and doing full searches, and posting when there's an, you know, an opening, all those pieces that, again, there's a trail of my concern based on motions and speaking on the floor. So, it's all out there in the public. So, I would ask, if you don't recall, go back to the December two thousand seventeen meeting where we had our evaluation of the superintendent, and you will see that I expressed those concerns then. Many of them were repeats from the earlier evaluation. I believe that my colleague, Ms. Martin, also had concerns that were expressed at that meeting. From my perspective, we had six months from January to July to see improvement, and in fact, things only got worse, and that's what prompted this action. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I mean, for the record, this has not been easy for me, as incoming mayor, the seventh member of the board. I respect many people on both sides of the issue, always have, always will, but the thing is, what I saw was certain problems that were created, and they were either created by intent, or they were created because of lack of knowledge. Whatever it is, I made my decision, I made my choice, for the best interests of the children of the city of Lowell. I think what will happen is the next few months, as this, as the information is released, the public will be able to make their own judgment as to what has transpired, because the information will be correct and agreed upon. So, I need to, all right, we've made the motion, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
No.
Four yeas, three nays, approved.
Okay. Next, I need a motion to recess and enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion, review, and potential release of past executive session minutes relative to the contemplated termination of Dr. Salah Kafawi, as well as a general strategy in this matter. Open discussion, which may detrimentally affect the school committee's position with respect to potential litigation and negotiations with non-union employees. Open discussion, which may detrimentally affect the school committee's position with respect to potential litigation, negotiations with non-union employees, enter adjourned from executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session. And Mr. Nada seconded by- Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
No.
Six yeas, one nays, approved.
Thank you, we'll now go into executive session. I'm sorry.
I could have missed it, however, I don't believe that there was a determination as to whether you'll be reconvening an open session, or leaving from the executive session.
We're going to leave, I, that's what I said, we're going to leave from the executive session. Okay, thank you.